Good evening, City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2024. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shevach?
Please please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with our work session. The first item on the agenda is the final site plan request for the child daycare on Creekside Drive. The applicant could please come forward, name an address, and an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Jeff Plautz with Neffen Associates, 6405 York Road, Parma Heights, Ohio, 44130. Do any fill out the audience participation?
No, don't. That's further. It's P-L-A-U-T-Z.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
We're here just for a final site plan approval. I believe it's been a few months since we were first here for our preliminary. I think we've worked through some comments through engineering and even some further comments to help advance the site. I think we've done the best we can. I do understand that it is a tight site. There are a lot of constraints. So there's a lot of, lot of pieces to fit into a small puzzle here. But I think we've, I think we've done our best. I know the dumpster was a bit of an issue. It's now, it's now fenced instead of a masonry dumpster. It'll be over top of the easement, so if it ever need to be removed, it wouldn't be a large expense. Other than that, I guess I ask any questions?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I have the same feeling I had about this when we first looked at it. It's, it looks overdeveloped. That's, I think, the best word I can, I can say. I know that you've gone through all the motions. You've gotten the variances that you need to allow it to work. Lynn, I think I had raised a question. Was there any feedback from the fire department regarding the ability to get around the building to fight a fire, should there be one? Because there's only that six-foot area and it's enclosed by the fence.
No, no issue with that.
They accepted it and will work around that. Hopefully, we'll never have to. But as long as they've looked at it. Ed, any comments or questions regarding this?
No sir.
Craig?
I have a couple of questions. What are bollards are specific? It says bollards are specified at the play yard perimeter adjacent to the parking stalls.
Oh, the bollards. Those are, those are like three-foot high, the concrete filled steel tubes.
Yeah, okay.
Because of its proximity to the drive.
Yeah, and the playground.
It's giving extra protection if there should ever be a problem.
I don't, okay. And then, so you did say that the, the trash bins area are going to be fenced in now? I thought, I was reading that they were going to have like a shrubbery and stuff around it. But it's a combination of both?
There's landscape, but it's not going to be masonry. It's going to be a fence.
Okay.
Enclosure.
It was originally proposed to be masonry, Craig.
Okay.
I, I think our regulation sort of almost requires that it match materials associated with the building. Because it's sitting on the sanitary sewer easement, Engineering Division said eh, don't like that.
But it will be screened with, with evergreen trees around it. So you'll see that, you'll really see that, not so much the fence.
Right.
So a solid white vinyl fence with arborvitae around it, which goes pretty, pretty tall. There is gates on this enclosure, is there?
Correct.
Okay. There was nothing that, that showed that there was or wasn't. So that's why.
Okay. Then the last one, so is just wanted to verify the variance on the parking spaces. So we accepted 31 spaces?
Yep, correct. EZA granted the variance for 31 spaces.
When the, the studies showed 29, so it doesn't seem like much variation on the study versus what it may actually be reality, but.
Right, but the reality of our regulation is higher than 31.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Let's hope the study was a good one.
Was pretty in-depth that what was attached with it. And, and we have other daycares that we've kind of seen.
Overruns of parking.
Yeah.
It appears as though our current standard is.
Way too high.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are just three things that point out in my review that I wanted some resolution to.
Thank you. Michael?
A question about facility, but bollard is also a nautical term. It's one of those mushroom-looking stumps that you know the lines do for ships. I heard bollard.
Oh, okay.
I guess we're in a dockside parking.
Learned something, so I guess I'll go home now.
A little lesson. I'm good.
No substantive questions.
Thank you for sharing. Scott, any questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Lynn, anything else that we should be aware of regarding this application?
Summit Sound Water holds the conservation easement. So that's just a point of interest in terms of them being the review authority and the inspection authority and the owner of the easement, I would think. Things a tight ship in terms of, yeah, crossing the, crossing the easement line is what is going to happen. I, I wouldn't be surprised if they require some signage on that easement that says, hey, this is conservation easement.
Seen them before in other locations.
Yeah. That's really the only point of interest is.
All right. Yeah, it'll be good protection during construction to protect what's there. Because I'm sure if they go over that line.
It's just, it's going to be tight.
Yeah.
Because how do you build a facility? And it gets pretty tight into that boundary there.
It's been done and it'll be done again.
Yeah.
From an engineering standpoint, I'm sure you.
Sure, sure will be, yes.
All right, thank you. We'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda portion. Thank you. Second item in the work section is the lot consolidation request to 2206 East Aurora Road. Name an address and an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Matt Solura, 9901 Ravenna Road in Twinsburg. We have, last year purchased, or 2017, we purchased 2206 East Aurora Road with an existing freestanding building on it. There was a two-acre lot directly to the west of it, which we purchased last year. It's been abandoned and vacant for probably 30 years. Used to be an old gas station, I believe, back in the 70s. There are no tanks buried there. We did have environmental dump prior to. But we're looking to consolidate the 2206 one-acre lot and the vacant lot next to it into one three-acre parcel. Plan is eventually to put a building up on both of those. So that's, we'll be back multiple times for that process as well, so.
All right, sounds good. You've included the dedication of the, in the right additional land that the city was requesting. So Lynn, this is pretty straightforward. There's nothing.
Straightforward.
Yeah, okay. Ed, any questions?
No, thank you.
Craig?
No, I got any questions?
Michael?
Could see if you'd use.
All right. You want to have a seat? We'll get back to you here shortly in the regular meeting agenda. Lynn, you be up next for the draft update for the zoning map. But if no one has any issues, we're just going to put that in the regular meeting agenda. So members of the audience can stay around if they want to, but aren't required to sit through it, as interesting as it will be. We're all okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So 7:09, and let's go into the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the January 22nd, 2024 minutes. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes?
No sir.
Seeing none, the minutes will be accepted as submitted. Public participation opportunity for members of the community to address planning commission. Seeing none, we'll roll into the next item, which is the final site plan approval for the child daycare. Applicant could please come back up to the podium. Anything else you'd like to share with Planning Commission regarding your submission this evening?
No, I think we, I think we covered it.
Ed, anything?
No sir.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
Not mistaken.
Like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative, along with the submitted site plans and landscape plan for Kitty Academy, permanent parcel number 64-08378 Creekside Drive, date stamped received February 13th, 2024, I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, approval of the SWP3 by the Engineering Department, and two, approval of the long-term maintenance agreement by the Engineering Department. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Craig. Discussion?
No question.
Yes?
No call question. Call question to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Final approval or nothing?
Thank you.
Next item, lot consolidation to 2206 East Aurora Road. Mr. Solura, anything else to share this evening with?
Nope.
Commission?
None, thank you.
Ed?
No sir.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
Not mistaken.
Like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted lot consolidation and right-of-way dedication plat for 2206 East Aurora Road, permanent parcel numbers 64-01637 and 64-08651, date stamped received March 5th, 2024, I move that Planning Commission recommend approval to City Council.
I'll second.
Discussion. I wasn't sure if you are aware that this does need to get final approval by City Council. We just are recommending.
Yes.
That for approval. Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Recommendation for?
Take two.
4-0. Thank you. Next item would be the draft updated zoning map. Lynn, you're up.
Okay, so I left at your spots two handouts. One of the zoning maps that we probably have to be agreeing, and a list of parcel numbers. So let's maybe start with the list of parcel numbers. All of these properties, 18 of them, are publicly owned. They're either owned by the City of Twinsburg, Summit County Metro Parks, Land Conservancy. Almost all of them are either in a flood district, adjacent to Tinkers Creek, or really loaded up with wetlands. So the thought being that regardless of the current zoning, which ranges from single-family residential to industrial, all of these need to be rezoned to Public Facilities District, which is the district that we would choose for open space. Some of them are landlocked. The ones, most of them are also deed restricted. You cannot build on them. And any use of these properties would be for open space, trails, or parkland. So this, this list is truly more of a housekeeping issue than truly a rezoning. They, they exist in various zoning districts, but, but you can see there's a variety in here that are C3, which is Interchange Business District. And that, those are, let's see. Primarily on the fourth page, the top aerial, you'll see the orange markers of lands that were recently purchased by West Creek Conservancy. All of those were previous, that are zoned C3 Interchange Business District. They're, they're deed restricted. So I sent West Creek an email.
That means they can never be sold.
Can never be sold, yeah. Sent an email, said, hey, we're going to rezone your property Twinsburg to Public Facilities District. He said, that's good. Good with us. So if we want to get up and look at the larger map, you maybe can get a better idea of it, of what I'm talking about here. I made another small little list of other items on this map.
This, this would be part of the overall zoning code changes that would go on the November ballot?
Yeah. These, we could take these through the process right now. We could say, well, let's make a motion that we hear what we're saying, we agree with this, this makes sense for these to be public facilities district. We'd like to recommend to council to change these. We could just do it. This must keep going to voters to change to PF District.
A change of this assembly?
These are, these are exempted. These.
Council, they do, the zoning district classification.
It absolutely. And one of those changes was a charter change last year where we added metro parks to the list of entities that would be landholders that would be changed to PF without.
Without.
And we'd take it at the council.
Yeah.
To do so, but it wouldn't be put on that. So it's this. So this, here, north of the cemetery, and some of this here. And there's a little, there's a little piece right here, right here.
The hatch here, the hatch itself.
Yeah, this landlocked piece. But again, it's adjacent to P. Every single one alone is adjacent to PF District. Let's see that item list. Yeah, there's maybe, maybe three lots here that the city owns. There's this one. Yeah, maybe one on the other side. They're, they're, these were purchased through the flood program. Yeah, I don't, there's not, it's not any controversial.
Even the pushback, we already know about.
Exactly. This, I, probably owners have been contacted. Now, the one that, there's a couple times we had true updates that aren't on here. This one is not controversial. This lot right here, the little lot right here. This lot was part of this cluster district associated with Fox Hollow. If you remember, this was the model home. This was the model home associated with.
Seminary.
Yeah. And so then they kind of run into problems by having this cluster from zoning, like, oh, we can't shed because we're in a cluster. They aren't part of the HOA. This would really, I'm going to say, ambition on my part with Fox Hollow, man, it didn't, it didn't strike me as any reason why we should make a rezonance rezoning. But then as time went by and a family lived in there, it makes more sense for them to be a single-family house.
So that's, that's just something that's.
That's just another change. Another one like that is this right here. That's Johnson Romino Funeral Home. It's zoned to our forest and family. Change that to PF as well. I guess it could have tossed us on the list that it's not open space. It's a private funeral home.
So why would you put that in?
It's, that's, we allow that to PF. It's not traditionally used, yeah.
Would be the dust board.
Yeah. Another entity is, let's see, this. Okay, these now condos that were once a part of it, right here, zoned single-family residential.
I don't know. I don't know why. They were termed four miller condos.
Yeah, and it's on single-family. First long, then short. I mean, still with that street here, maybe like.
Same thing.
Same, but.
So we change the word of the line.
I don't know. I don't know. Think of this. So I don't know. Thinking about what to do with this. The best equal, it seems 3.5 acres for April 20th, so it's really, it's also only allows me to want to add to this, so I'll test that. So, so then, this is probably one of the most interests and that would be the biggest change. This area here, here were apartments, here were apartments, the hymens, rail drive area, and then the city piece, all, that is shown on this map that we updated. That's mixed PUD.
Mixed.
So backstory on that one. That would be a new, that would be a new district.
Is that a recommendation from?
Yeah, that's a recommendation.
What, what does it allow to do that they want to change?
So what prompted this is, no. The original PUD district that allows for even screen , obviously a lot of apartments and commercial development. At some point, we changed that. We said, no, only single-family homes. Without, PUD only allows for single-family homes. So that meant that all the apartments and the commercial development is a non-implorant use. Hymens are the whole, all non-implorant ways of use. So we have to correct that.
So that's changing back to a lot of fur?
Yeah.
And, and the city is okay? Why, why do they want to take that PF in turn to the PUD and sell that or develop it or do something?
There's, there's definitely interest. There's been previous discussions, even at planning commission level, why couldn't we put some commercial uses at that location? And so.
Is that the fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the piece.
Okay.
That's the piece that we've tried to rezone two or three times.
Cluster problems, and people just weren't supporting.
And, yeah. I mean, even though I think the most recent, Ted was here.
Yeah.
Marketed it. I mean, personally, I think it makes entirely too much sense to build condo cluster first-floor master type stuff in there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather see that, living in that neighborhood than to see it.
See what's in there.
Like first-floor master detached cluster homes or some type of zero lot line. There's a huge need for that.
Well, so the mixed P, so then when we come in with a test for the mixed PUD, you'll see that the mixed PUD really would allow for that type of housing product, allows some commercial development.
What ranges?
It doesn't really go out any type of residence.
And you and I both know that if we wanted to sell that, we would sell it at a loss.
Yeah.
Development would come in and sue and get it rezoned. Because that's what happens.
So by doing this, we correct for our past changes and we allow for a right, compliance of, allow a right to.
Yeah.
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 It's not, no.
Oh, we're going to max. We're going to do a doxus of all words. We're going to have a three-story.
Three-story.
And small footprint.
Foot-hack.
So, yeah, it seemed like, we had a wide agenda. So let's, let's briefly look at where we're headed with some of these map changes. So that's sort of one thing that we have a little bit understanding of as we move, you know, towards sort of the draft document here.
Only because I'm a very good annual report, because of current condition.
Yeah.
They will, they will have, right?
Oh, yeah, there will be, yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming these people on, going to go court, they're circled back here, probably feel that PF gets changed to some type of, get developed into a commercial. Right there. But it would just, we just have to require a nice buffer.
Ray Smith, same way. He's the old gentleman lighthouse right there, you know, at the top of the crest off of 91. He is badly opposed. Kind of, you know, because right now he's just, right? Yeah. He's right next to this.
The problem is immediately to his south. He's the little gray house at the top, you know, with every wall up, the driveway goes up there on 91.
Oh.
Wayne's house.
Yeah, he's up 91. Yeah, he's, but he's like right. But he's, but he's right up against. Yeah, so this would.
Any development would, would impact him as well. Or his plans here and that.
I know, but you know how that's, that's right back there.
Yeah. But that's, that's, that's sort of the basis of this recommendation is that we, we sort of.
We're getting it.
Yeah.
Well, that was the whole reason why I just came to give.
Yeah.
Does that have to be voted on?
Yeah, correct.
So we would just, I said, I have a plan for it.
Yeah.
It still comes across for recommendations. So, so I'd be, you know, like reworking on the zoning, including changes if there was something that had, had issues with.
Right.
This is, we can bring it up.
This is a draft.
That is all.
Counsel can say, no, it's not.
That's what I'm about.
Yeah.
Exactly. Or more changes before we put it out.
Yeah.
But the beauty of the process is, to your point, ultimately up your vote.
Yep.
I mean, so, to your vote for recommending body and council, council shall put it on the, so it's, it's, yeah, there might be some discussion, but Mike Jassid and Lynn and the faculty.
This is the recommendation.
He's the artist through this with Zunko and.
No, Michael's sitting there saying he's a nerd. I literally found a couple slivers of unzoned land that are rectum microscopic. And there are certain properties where the zoning boundary doesn't follow the council line, like all other problems there. Yeah, like.
Kind of what, answer a few of the types.
The kind of what?
Yeah.
I think, you know, really this one here where we are not rezoning and everything is like, this piece, I can't see the property boundary because.
So where someone is aligned with the class here.
Yeah.
Sort of like test.
Yeah. I think there's some.
Moist thing.
Maybe even, you know, you get the firm really after, you get all flooded.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, don't bother me, but I don't mind if you.
I think there's some really nice features in here, Michael. That's why it West Creek Conservancy.
Well, I mean, we talked about, we had something. I wish that same would.
But this also results in the whole coach Twinsburg.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is exactly.
Exactly. It's just when I, when I showed this letter.
And they didn't get it.
People like, yeah.
What, what should I do?
Well, I'm not on the run. So, so what is the kind of going forward? So we have to get it down to ballot from November and it takes certain time. So what?
You're going to start getting a draft here very soon of the actual test.
Do you know when is the last time we have to say yes if you still can get it to council?
So I or something?
That's your date.
Yeah. We're not here, we're not here until, like, typically.
Our date is either the end of May or beginning of June.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, it's June.
Yeah. We have to exonerating sort of like reserve the room. I don't, see how, see how, what comfort level.
We want to do a three-grate thing out there. I know we've already discussed that.
Two or no.
We do.
Council does it so that it's not. We have the opportunity.
I, and the conversation was, I didn't want to use the phrase as an emergency because people again are just thinking.
Yeah.
She wants something. They won't get the, to meet a deadline and waive a 30-day waiting period. To give the mayor the option to veto. I mean, it's.
So a lot of this was here, but what, I went to a, you know, they had a little public meeting about the actual downtown. Where's the square?
Right there.
Yeah, right. They, they were talking about this as well as that included with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one thing that I have a direction of is, who is this, who is this?
Because it's, because it's, because it's the township. Township, but it's, it is public. It's.
We should, we should, no, that, ours. No, Twinsburg's over there. We are ahead, they should be.
Well, it is in the city. Owned by the township, but it's in the city. That, that's a one felony.
So we, so we could control what they do on that?
With the zoning. Like these, these, like, like this.
We should exercise that right immediately.
This is in a township, but, you know, this, these areas are in the township. But this is in the city. It's, her is in the city. It's not a cutout.
They should have an offer.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Well, that's why. Right, there's a little spot, yeah.
There's stuff.
It's township, right by my house, right, right. So what, what's happening on here for some of the help? They were proposing, like, right over here where that old school was, is that where this is? They wanna like condos? Or where was that?
There is, yeah.
This is the snow village, right?
A redevelopment site right here. So that's.
School's here.
We all look the wrong way.
That's where the snow, right, that's where I'm at, right, in the baseball, right, yeah. So that's, I thought.
No, it's gonna be a mixed.
It's gonna be commercial and.
Well, it's gonna be. Okay, that's, that's. And that's.
The only change to the C5 is to add all of downtown into the C5. And I think we're no longer to call it C5, we're gonna call it downtown district.
So. You know, we had tax, you could have had financing areas.
Yeah. So. Two things here, not a whole lot of changes. This looks like we did something significant, we really did nothing with that. And really, probably the most significant change is for me to request this zoning, or some sort of flexibility there, and to make this all real legit. And then there, we've just got these little pieces to just sort of bring uses in the compliance or something that makes more sense.
So a couple of questions again with the square. But one of the things they said is to do things on the square, they had to get more population within walking distance. So how are they gonna do that without traffic?
It's not possible. I, we're just not gonna get the density that it would take to really support a significant amount of commercial development, or, we're just not. People don't support that because they're afraid of increasing traffic. There's not really enough land to do that.
There's a little bit of that for eighteen years, so I get the, the beauty of a square and the drawback on the, yeah.
The, the, the present density proposed on that development site, all projects overlooked in the site. It's very limited density.
So then what, just a high, so what are they looking for? What would be, we're moving forward ahead of something, then what do we envision if we're not having the density enough for business? And what do we see happening in five, seven years?
Right, I think, I think the hope is that getting the, the commercial development and the housing that they're proposing from here may get candidates to do more housing here.
Well, you were at that meeting, I remember, my biggest takeaway was, we need some more.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, I mean, I live right over here, and you can't walk all the way down and through every part. There, there's no sidewalks. But just, you know, I live close, to get to the square, I'd have to drive to it.
Connectivity plan, just need a connectivity plan.
Yeah, as I said, we have somebody for connectivity. No, that's the biggest one, I think the first, my dad.
Yeah, connectivity plan, that all, that all, that's the buzzword for it. Incremental, but they're good when they're done.
Well, I think the worst thing I want, you'd be able to bike along, along there, to get to the park. Yeah, cause it just stops, well, you see it every. You take it to the subway, you move, yeah, then it just gets.
The rest of the park, I think there's more sidewalk.
He fits subway there?
I get the.
Still subway tunnel, it's all good.
That, that wasn't be able to literally bike, ever hike, allowing the entire city. Have some subway to get to everything.
Yeah.
Get to that fountain, get to look at the park. I mean, there's some elevation changes, which I understand are, you know, you know, something, but still.
Sure. I mean, it may take time, but you get a good connectivity.
This, this will go to.
It's, it's a real good, real good thing.
Are we?
You're maybe a C3.
I think I'm a C3, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's probably, yeah, Giant Eagle's, yeah, I don't know, but that's probably.
So, that's the map.
It's great, Lynn, thank you.
Yeah. Right, I think FEMA gave us some money to buy them, so now we're not gonna.
I just wanna pass that Mr. Shebek sent us all an email at 6:44, he's covering council meeting, and so. So when it comes time, I'll, I'll make a motion, excuse.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so thanks for that.
Thanks for the handout. That was great.
Anything else, Lynn?
We will have a meeting next month, I have a couple advocates. They could probably get extra lease trucking yard, and I have another lot split, it's pending.
When's the June meeting tentatively planned?
June meeting is the 17th.
I'll be gone, okay.
And I'll be gone.
Okay.
So, no.
Make sure Steve's here.
That's right.
I'll be in Ireland.
I'll be in Hawaii.
Nice. Both good destinations.
Yeah.
You taking the airline, this flight?
I am.
Nice.
They own Scotland and London.
That is great, that's great for the local air.
So, so Lynn, I'm sorry, so on the 15th, we, we have an agenda for that. I just wanna look at one thing here, on the 15th. Oh, it's tax day, I knew there was something wrong on that day.
Tax day, military payday, active duty payday.
Good and bad. Okay, well, thank you, Lynn, for that. Let me get back here to our agenda then. So communications and miscellaneous. Scott, anything to share?
Nothing new with the city this time, I mean, you know, just kind of what Lynn was touching on, the Zonco stuff's moving forward. So I'm sure we're gonna start seeing more and more of that.
All right.
And then just for clarification, the next meeting is timed, I'll be scheduled for when? I'm sorry.
The 15th, April 15th.
Got it, thank you. Appreciate it. That's nothing further.
Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Craig?
No, sir.
Michael?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing else, Lynn? All right, I need a motion to excuse Mr. Shebek from this evening's meeting.
Still moved.
Throw in a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, 7:38, adjournment.